Yeah. Yeah. Who's there? Wonder if I have to. Take it. And it's just like you're out of luck now. Yeah, both for. You know, so. Well, we're. Yes. 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 Yeah. Yeah. I'm a problem. But it's not. Yeah. 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 Oh. Yeah. 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 This is the right one. Yeah. 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 I'm sure that the service is all you need. Yeah, the numbers don't seem to be. This is the better part of the story. It's the best. Yeah. Oh, yeah. 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 Yeah.
I think they had those, but.
Oh, it was for us.
Yeah. That's all I think I should talk about. The banner. The first step.
How are you, Tim? Yeah. Yeah. Oh, good. Oh. What do you agree with? Okay. Yeah. 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 Ooh. Um. I guess we didn't. Yeah. Yeah. So. I think it probably. I have to go. Honestly, that I can talk here and learn more. So, yeah. I was passing away, so that. Yeah. That's that's always very. So. I don't know. Yeah. Yeah. But thank you. We read it.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council work session for August 9. Um. We are here this morning. We're going to talk about, uh, our first item is the Southwest Infrastructure and Planning Study, and then we're going to have an update on our fire operations staffing. Um, I'm going to quickly kick it over to Scott. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So this morning's first presentation is going to be a combination of staff, uh, with Cory, I believe, starting us out. And we do have our consultant here to give most of the presentation as well.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Um, morning, everyone. Cory Boganrave, Principal Traffic Engineer here at City Des Moines. So, um, I'm going to give a little overview of, uh, the Southwest Infrastructure Planning Study, and then I'm going to turn it over to our consultant team lead, Jesse Por, um, with Felsberg, Holton, Olavig to, um, get through the bulk of the presentation. So we've got a lot of information to go through, so I'm going to go ahead and jump right in. Um, again, we're here to talk about Southwest Infrastructure and Planning Study. I'm going to give a little overview, talk about the purpose, why we're doing this study, talk about the goals, and then I'll turn it over to Jesse to talk about, um, kind of the process we've had to date, some of the recommendations that have come out of our stakeholder input and, um, open house that we had a couple of weeks ago. Uh, we'll touch on the Grayslake Wetland Analysis. That was a component of the study. Um, and then we'll wrap up, talk about, uh, the next steps and key dates for the project. So this may be, um, repeat information for you, and you all probably know this information, but just as a refresher of why we're doing this study, um, back in the late 90s, early 2000s, uh, there was a study and a plan put in place called the Southwest Connector. And that was basically the extension of Veterans Parkway that kind of goes diagonal through this study area, um, goes on an old rail line and, um, past Grayslake to Southwest 7th. And that study was, um, really needed for, number one, uh, growth in this area, so expected traffic growth. And then, um, at that time, the, uh, Des Moines International Airport had planned to move the terminal to the west side of the airport. And since then, um, the airport has now decided, you know, they're pursuing the terminal on the east side of the airport along Fleur Drive. And so because of that, um, there hasn't been as much growth in the area, um, as expected. And so traffic volumes didn't reach the forecast levels with those changes. So in 2018, the Southwest Connector was removed from the Long Range Transportation Plan. And so what this study is, is now that that is no longer the plan, then what is the plan? What improvements do we need to make to the area? And so what we're really talking about is the study area shown here in red, which is about Highway 28, um, 28 on the, uh, west side over to Southwest 7th. Um, so some of the goals of the, um, project, I should step back one second. Um, also here shown, and I mentioned the Grayslake Wetland Analysis. That's shown, um, just south of Grayslake, um, in the green area. And then the area shown in blue, we're going to kind of touch a little bit on that. But what that area is, is the South of Grayslake Master Plan area. And that was a, um, kind of a project running in tandem with the overall Southwest Infrastructure Study, and that will actually be presented at a future, uh, council work session. Um, so some of the goals of the study, um, really want to establish that regional multimodal transportation infrastructure, and we want to develop a, a strategy to implement that. So how could we prioritize projects and, um, you know, to meet the goals as, as growth continues? Uh, we want to improve the network reliability. Um, as most of you know, George Flag Parkway is, uh, you know, one of the, the main arteries through this area, and in times of high water, you know, that's one of the first roads to flood. So we really want to make the network a little more resilient, um, to flooding, uh, efficient, and of course, safe for all modes of transportation, um, not just vehicles, but also pedestrians and cyclists. Uh, we want to accommodate that long-term economic development. You have residential, commercial, and industrial in this area. So how can we be flexible and, um, build our transportation network to serve that future growth? And then lastly, um, we want to, uh, you know, this, this really focuses on around the Grayslake area, but really applies to the whole study areas. How do we protect that, the recreational natural resources in this area and, uh, really build out the infrastructure, uh, to support that existing, um, system and expand it? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our consultant lead, Jesse Por, and he will talk a little bit about, um, kind of our stakeholder team and where we've been to today.
Good morning. Happy Monday. Uh, my name is Jesse Por with Felsberg, Holton, Olavig. It's been a pleasure to work on the study alongside Cory and the staff and the city and other departments. Also a pleasure to meet some of you who came out to our open house, uh, which we had, uh, about a week and a half ago, uh, interacting with some of the information, some of it which is presented today. Um, in presenting the slides, uh, certainly would be open to any interaction or questions that come up as, as we make the presentation. Um, but I'm going to go through, uh, like I said, our process and kind of what's coming next, uh, down the, the recommendations. Oh, you already advanced the slides for me. So the first step that we did was to create an advisory committee and a stakeholder group that would help formulate some of the understanding and the background and also the, the needs and goals that Cory went over. So you can see a very diverse group of folks who were able to be a participation in that. We had a series of meetings where we identified goals and then some of the challenges and opportunities as well. Um, an extension of the project also identified the South of Grayslake Master Plan. And so that took a cohort from the stakeholder group and also added a few for, um, the specific need of the, the development plan to create an advisory committee, which met separately and then reported back to the stakeholder group. Uh, a lot of that purpose was to identify any opportunities to capitalize on Thomas Beck, uh, improvements that might need to be made in concert. So a lot of fun input and addition of that group was able to, I think, catalyze a lot more input on this, on this project, the infrastructure project than maybe would have been otherwise. Uh, at last count, we sent out information, uh, to over 300 individuals, community members, um, about, uh, recommendations that would be coming forward. And we had great attendance at the public meeting. We had over 90 people sign in, uh, which was great to, to experience and be a part of, uh, especially on the heels of COVID. Um, our process obviously was to start with traffic analysis, looking at, uh, the model and figuring out where, uh, flow wanted to go. Um, no real surprises there with, um, sort of the justification for the study overall, uh, identifying over time some of the, the intersections that would start to break down and, and some of the roadways that might need to be improved, uh, since the Southwest Connector wasn't going to come through. Uh, there still is a need to address some of those, those optimization opportunities and identify the network changes that would allow the higher level goals that we addressed to be accomplished. Uh, not only did we look at the, the roadway infrastructure, but we heard a lot of input from the active transportation group, the natural resources ideas, uh, transit needs as well. And so those were, uh, top of mind as well as we were looking at different network changes. What could be done to, uh, accelerate other opportunities beyond just the roadway? Um, the airport layout and development plans, specifically the development plan, which came through as we were doing this study, uh, certainly has some, a lot of influence on the west side of the project. And we want to capitalize existing infrastructure to the maximum extent possible, uh, to make sure that this area develops and transportation's handled efficiently for all modes. I won't go into too much detail, but you, I can dive into certain, uh, recommendations for those other modes, uh, as I go through. One of the main things that came through, obviously, as we get to our recommendations, were the typologies, the Move DSM identifies typologies for, uh, a lot of the roadways and major arterials selected, uh, throughout the community. And so what you see here on the screen is a lot of what our game plan is for typologies that would move people through this, uh, infrastructure study area. Um, as Cory said, all the way from, uh, Willow Creek intersection with, uh, Highway 28, all the way up to, um, Southwest 7th Street. Uh, we continued our study into the connection with Southwest 2nd as well because of that, um, South of Grayslake Master Plan and the know, the knowledge that there's going to be increased pressure in there as well. Uh, one of the main bullets there, the second one, is just the truck route directness and reliability. It's not shown specifically on this map, uh, but you can imagine Fleur, north and south, Bell, and George Flag, uh, kind of create a disconnected truck route, um, to get to Highway 28, um, which, as Cory mentioned, uh, is unreliable at times during flooding conditions. So, um, creating a continuity and reliability for that would be an important outcome, uh, related to the typologies that come through. Uh, we did hear a lot from public input as well that influences some of the recommendations that have come forward. Um, a lot of focus and, and interest in traffic calming and making sure speeds are, um, sufficient, but not, not any faster than is necessary, uh, for safety concerns, um, and just be supportive of development adjacent to, uh, the roadways. Um, circulation and movement of traffic, there was a lot of concern that, uh, a lot of these, this increased growth of, um, traffic is going to tunnel down Park Avenue, uh, between Southwest 46th and Fleur. And so anything that could be done to, uh, keep that additional traffic off of Park was, um, certainly heard loud and clear in our public input meeting. Um, and as I said, the multimodal connections and the desire there to make sure that there's connectivity north and south and taking advantage of the existing trail network was, um, highly prioritized as well. So as an engineering company, we, we've obviously looked at, um, the different roadway alignments. That's what you see in the different boxes there, uh, studying about 12 different, um, segments or alignments. Um, Willow Creek, uh, Southwest 56th Street, a new alignment in the southwest corner. Uh, we also looked at, uh, different approaches to Southwest 56th, north of McKinley, uh, how to handle Park Avenue, George Flag transition, and then all the way into Bell Avenue and, and Thomas Beck. So a lot of what I'm going to talk about today really isolates a, a handful of the major, um, segments that we studied. Uh, the report obviously will go through every segment that we studied. I don't have time, and I don't think there's a lot of value in unpacking all of them, but I am going to go through the yellow ones today. Suffice it to say, um, a lot of the development pressure that'll happen in the southwest quadrant will lead to the need for improved infrastructure. Um, but decisions will need to be made on Southwest 56th, north of McKinley. Uh, George Flag Parkway obviously is the, the elephant in the room, I think. And then Park Avenue, George Flag and Southwest 46th intersection was a, a significant area of focus for us as well. Uh, with the South of Grayslake Master Plan and Thomas Beck Road improvements, we're, we're dovetailing those together as those recommendations come out for our master plan and ultimate land use, uh, improvements that Thomas Beck will be addressed as well. We also heard and advanced recommendations for the, uh, supporting the Indianola Hills neighborhood. Obviously, our study focused on Thomas Beck and, and Indianola Road, um, but then there's interactions between Southwest 9th and Southwest 7th and 2nd. So, uh, some of those recommendations come forward. A lot of them are multimodal safety improvements and capacity. Uh, so I'll go through a couple of, uh, the segments that I thought were a priority for discussion today, uh, but I would pause for a second and ask if there's any orientation questions that I can answer real quick before I go deeper. Saying none? Okay, we're doing good. Sounds good. Uh, for Southwest 56th and McKinley, this, uh, between Southwest McKinley and Park, this became a, a immediate focus area because the land use plan identifies business park in the area, and you have development pressure, sort of single-family residential on the west side, um, and then in the future, business park operations or office in the future on the east side. Uh, Watrous Avenue becomes important, the connection to Park Avenue, and whether we make the connection to Southwest McKinley, uh, or not, um, was a, a large conversation that was had, uh, by a handful of folks in the stakeholder group. And so we look at that, uh, the airport runway timing is very much unknown. Uh, certainly was understood that the intersection is overlaid by the airport runway protection zone, and so it is kind of off limits for development, but, uh, it's still in private ownership, so adjacent to the roadway. Um, so with increasing residential development pressure, you're going to see increasing traffic loads on that roadway. But once business park operations hap, or office development happens to the east, um, certainly is going to mean a need for connectivity to Highway 28, uh, in multiple locations. So, uh, our recommendations are continued, obviously, to keep continuity to, uh, Highway 28 and Park Avenue. Um, and so we do see the need to continue to connect, um, Southwest 56th to Southwest McKinley Avenue. Um, but the other thing that we thought we would do is provide backside outlet on Southwest 46th Street, um, to kind of balance that loading onto Park Avenue. Um, and the, the traffic counts never really bared out, and, and the ultimate use of Southwest 46th never really was justified. And so you'll see in the plan that there's not a backside connection to Southwest 46th, which would utilize that intersection with, uh, Park and George Flag Parkway. Um, so there you can see on the screen there, the recommendations that'll, like, the high level recommendations that come through, uh, do make that connection to, um, Southwest McKinley. Uh, decision will need to be made about, uh, the airport and the city, uh, obtaining the property to put that alignment in eventually. I think the development, or the need for improving the intersection will likely happen before the airport runway actually happens. So a decision will need to be made there, uh, regarding that. On the north side, um, you'll see kind of that, uh, Southwest 56th improved portion, uh, just south of Park Avenue. Uh, that was done a, a while back, um, in anticipation of a T-intersection with the Southwest Connector. Um, and so with that not being present in the future and this continuing to become business office park, uh, you would anticipate, uh, needing to make that connection, uh, somehow. So we looked at a handful of different options to support the existing subdivisions that are being approved, um, on the west side for single families and the, uh, business, uh, businesses that are developed along that alignment as well. Unfortunately, there are potential, uh, property impacts, uh, related to either alignment that would occur, and so we've recommended going forward with kind of the original, uh, connection there, uh, at point number four. So a challenge in the design there. Um, that alignment is intended to sort of be a secondary connector, not a, not a through connection for traffic, trying to bypass the Highway 28, the Park Avenue to George Flag, uh, sort of through movement. And so, uh, a lot of attention's going to need to be placed on, uh, traffic control and calming, uh, along that alignment, uh, to prevent some of that, uh, movement. Uh, for George Flag Parkway, um, you know, I think folks who have lived in the area know it well enough. I don't need to go too deep into the study, and obviously the Southwest Factor would have elevated, uh, this alignment up out of the floodplain, which is the major concern, uh, currently for it to be utilized efficiently and reliably. Um, and so there, like I said, there was, uh, public input about relieving pressure that's growing on Park, um, specifically families coming out concerned about access and, and safety, uh, adjacent to schools, uh, school crossings and such, so, and not wanting to widen Park Avenue to the east of Southwest 46th and George Flag. Uh, elevating the alignment, though, is within the floodplain. Uh, the significant amount of fill would be required, uh, regardless of what alignment is chosen. And so there is a compensatory or compensation of, uh, some of that fill concern that would be addressed with floodplain permitting. We've had to kind of think about how to handle some of that, uh, soil balancing requirement. There was a lot of input as well to the Des Moines Waterworks Master Plan and their desire to expand their facilities. Yes, sir.
Good question. You're, you're going to elevate the alignment above the floodplain. What's that going to do to the Isaac Walton Lake over there, uh, at the corner?
Great question. So a detailed floodplain analysis was not done as part of the study. The, uh, understanding of what the floodplain elevation is today, um, helped us understand what those elevations would need to be if it did go forward. Uh, with final design, you would have zero impact, and you would need to identify a way to not have, have impact on adjacent properties, obviously. Um, I believe if I understand, if I'm recalling the, the plans right, the flood, the roadway doesn't start to elevate until further to the northeast, uh, of the Isaac Walton Lake. Uh, the intent would have, be to have zero impact. In fact, I'll talk a little bit here about the alignment. Our expectation would be to recommend culverts, uh, through, uh, George Flag's elevated alignment to allow for wildlife passage, prevent them from coming across on top of the road, but also to act as a way for those flood, the, the flood flows to, to bypass, pass back and forth between, so it doesn't act as a levee, and it creates some of those concerns upstream for flooding. Um, so again, with the compensatory storage, we were identifying, you can see there on point number two, uh, identifying a place within Des Moines Waterworks Park where we might be able to pull additional storage from. Um, and that has been discussed with, uh, some of the folks with the Des Moines Waterworks Foundation already, so, uh, they're aware of it. And, uh, change in their master plan, uh, of having some facilities there in that location has changed, so, uh, the idea seems to be acceptable to them at this point.
Come on here. What do we?
Right. So in 2040, we were looking, anticipating about 27,000 vehicles coming down Park Avenue.
Twenty seven?
Twenty seven thousand coming down Park Avenue. And so trying to figure out the split between which would take Park and which would take George Flag. If this roadway segment is, is improved, then you see the same amount of balance on Park Avenue today as you have with the, the growth and the increase being, basically, we're expecting them to transfer over to, to George Flag. So somewhere between, I don't know, roughly, I don't have that number exactly on the back of my head. That's a good question. Uh, along Park Avenue to this intersection.
So are we looking at more, thinking more often, buildings are going to be going up, mostly there, do we have? And I thought I had, uh, the, possibly on 28.
Um.
Is that?
There would be more development as there's empty lots.
Correct.
But there's. East, east.
Yeah, there's been empty lots. It's. I just thought, maybe we were doing this because we have some type of interest in the wall bigger. Do you have any other interest?
No, like, not for current development. This is more a planning group. Or even it. Okay.
Um, growth, the south and southwest of the current intersection is going to, you know, anticipating more people coming into downtown from outside of the area. Um, a lot of that, that, um, growth and, and demand is going to come from outside of this existing corridor. Which, you know, would have been the.
One more question. That potential soil burrow site?
Yes, sir.
Is that on Waterworks property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's okay to, to, uh, remove dirt there?
That's the understanding, yes.
Is it just that outlined area, or can, can it expand?
This is illustrative of an area that we would need to calculate from. It's not a final design, and we didn't do any grading plans. It's just where could you take the burrow from? Because for every cubic foot of soil you put in for George Flag, you need one and a half to come out of this basin area. And so we're looking for a place where that could happen. The easiest place is number two there on the.
So where would that potential, uh, soil go?
Great question. We would need a disposal site, so that would be a balancing project for the city to try and find a, a receiving location.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, I think. Yeah. Hey.
Um, some of them would benefit from that, yes.
No, if I could, we don't, we're not talking about the timing. We want to make sure we understand how best to reserve corridors and what the plan would be, and then we would come up with timing, which will be several, several years, uh, as the demand use, use goes up. Again, if we don't, if we don't plan this out, the growth that does occur, and it finds its way to Park Avenue and also some of the side streets, South McKinley as well.
I think at this point, we have the corridors. The. The. There is corridors that. Connectivity to bypass other ways.
So that, yes, and, and that speaks to the timing of when are we actually going to invest these improvements?
Yeah.
But if, if the council likes this plan, the alignment, then we can reserve that, and we can plan around when, uh, a small housing development. Or something on Bell.
Really did it.
Yes.
Right.
Instead of commercial having room in that, it would be next. We have a. Just saying from a commercial.
Right.
So do you see this in our five-year CIP, or, or, or are we looking at?
No, it's going to be outside the five-year.
For the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because this will take coordination, Waterworks. Well.
Yep, that, that's, that's great, great discussion. Thanks for bringing up those ideas, uh, during the conversation here. Um, the George Flag Parkway, the, beyond the, raising it out of the floodplain, you'll see recommendations for leveraging connections to Great Western Trail, um, you know, which exists today. It's a fresh limestone surface, which was improved as a temporary improvement until the Southwest Connector would come through. Um, so now that that's not intended, that, that trail alignment would be retained and used as a corridor, a purposeful corridor for, um, for bikes and heads to utilize, um, which also raised the concern or challenge of how to address intersections at Bell Avenue and Southwest 30th, as well as, um, George Flag Parkway and, and Park and Southwest 46th. So we've spent a little time specifically on the intersection that I just mentioned. Um, we've analyzed it from the traffic counts that, uh, were just discussed, but also the additional types of safety concerns that you might have at that intersection as you experience those increased traffic volumes, as well as some of the existing developments that is there today and what might occur in the future, uh, as well as natural resource concerns with Frank Creek and multimodal with, uh, Great Western Trail. In 2005, that intersection was improved and realigned slightly, uh, to its current alignment. Um, it today is improved without the raised medians that you see further to the west, but, um, long-term, uh, can support traffic operations, um, is, is suitable for the amount of traffic that's expected. Uh, should the improvements be made to George Flag Parkway to get it up out of the floodplain, provide that connectivity, it does raise some opportunities to reevaluate, uh, the orientation and, and for the flow of the intersection itself proper. For those who are cyclists, uh, you know, the Great Western Trails prize, we, we just heard it come up multiple times, the challenges that this intersection presents, uh, to make your way across Park Avenue, uh, to at-grade crossings and further on south or north, as well as people who park along Southwest 46th as a temporary alignment, uh, to get south and enjoy that, um, amenity to the south. As well as the economic development potential there in the northeast corner with, um, you know, outdoor seating and, and, and entertainment and, and, uh, food options as well. So it's a hub, it's a hotspot, and there was a, a challenge to try and address those concerns as well. So we've, we're presenting three alternatives. We, we did look at a T-type intersection that would bring Park Avenue up into the, sort of smoothed-out alignment, um, but we're not presenting that today. Uh, we'll, we'll talk briefly about two intersection alignments. The one is what's there today is improved to match the existing cross-section with the raised medians and some controlled access to north and south, uh, to provide that efficient flow onto Park Avenue and George Flag, to have it operate with the level of service that you would need, uh, during those peak hour events, uh, that are expected down the road. Uh, the intersection does work, the level is. The level of service with the signalized intersection, it would support anything that would occur down Southwest 46 and the existing residential apartments there on the corner. But there, there will be a little bit restricted flow and challenges with maintaining the level service as you get to the peak traffic volume. So, it can work, but in the concept, we also looked at, I'll just touch on this briefly. This is just a random, an idea that came out of trying to solve a bunch of different problems. Frank Creek adjacent there to the west passes under a triple box culvert that was improved with that 2005 project. And so, it operates very well today, but as the watershed develops and more flows come through, there is concern that maybe those boxes would be undersized over time, as well as potentially an opportunity to utilize the easement or the alignment of the creek a little bit differently. The idea that came forward was to provide a realigned greenway of Great Western Trail underneath Park Avenue in the future to remove two at-grade crossings for cyclists and walking, pedestrians as well. You'll see on the next screen here, we're recommending Park Avenue have the bike infrastructure on the north side, so a side path on the north side of Park Avenue. So, this underpass under Park Avenue would connect cyclists up to Park Avenue and then down into Grayslake, I'm sorry, Des Moines Waterworks Park. So, it'll be a recommendation or a concept that comes through in our study, but certainly more, more to vet out there if it's desired or helpful for users to make that improvement. It would really only come forward if you made improvements to the Park Avenue, George Flag intersection. So, we looked at an alternative intersection alignment, not to try and be fancy or try and push some sort of specific idea, but just to consider the alternative, alternate ranges of options for the intersection. There are certainly some geometric challenges with the skewed entrance of George Flag Parkway into Park Avenue. And with increased traffic flow, you would anticipate a little bit more friction, potential safety concerns with, with the signalized intersection and the truck traffic that would be coming through there. And so, an alternative that looked at a roundabout concept, a single lane that would move truck routes and vehicles more efficiently from Park Avenue to George Flag or George Flag to Park Avenue was considered and designed as a sort of a concept that you can see there on the screen. On that, on that concept, you can see where we've identified the opportunity to realign the Great Western Trail underneath Park Avenue and connect back up to the infrastructure to get people into the park and along Park Avenue. Why it works, you know, it improves the mode, improvement in safety for all modes. Crash severity at roundabouts relative to signalized intersections generally are safer. And so, there is a benefit there with the increasing traffic over time. If there's an opportunity to improve the intersection, to consider a roundabout option.
Forty-six.
Great question. So, on the slide there, today, it goes to the back end of airport access, maintenance roads, and security access. There is one, I think, run residential property that's back there that still has access to 46. There is potential development opportunities along Southwest 46 for some low-density residential. But that is really all today. Is there a follow-up question?
Does it dead-end there?
It does not dead-end. You could actually make your way through and up to Willow Creek Avenue from here today.
Forty-six.
Yeah, you'd sort of serpentine your way down through the back, backside on some unpaved roads. It's pretty, pretty wild and woolly back there, but, you know, it's part of the infrastructure plan. And the airport does have that identified in their layout plan as access, so maintaining that would be for their benefit, as well as any other potential benefits for the city. I think there's at least, at least one, maybe more, yeah. Yes, sir. The, the design of the roundabout would be accommodating the highest intensity of use. And so, you have roundabouts across, across country being designed. Mountable curb apron gives you additional circumference for that tractor to make that turn, as well as emergency vehicles. I know our, our folks here with the fire engines will want to make sure that they could be accommodated as well. Yep. That's a great question. So, apologies, I'm blanking on the date, but we had our public meeting at the Scout Facility there off of Highway 28 and Scout. The 28th. We had about 90 people come through where we had stations, just like what you're seeing today with a handout, the boards that they could interact with. And as we would expect, there's a, there's certainly some folks who are uncertain about them, and that's, that's fair and understandable.
Uncertain about the roundabout or uncertain about the global project?
Uncertain about roundabouts in general, whether they are the right type of intersection treatment or not.
That's because they really haven't been built properly in Des Moines yet.
Okay. Dance in the street, right?
I mean, I understand it's unfamiliar to a lot, because the ones that we have had.
Yeah. This was well-thought-out in terms of the, how we're trying to move people off of Park onto George Flag. The design specifically, you see the little nose there to help get that orientation safety right. Takes away a lot of the friction that you would expect if it wasn't designed well, but that's a long way down the road.
Maybe a little public art in the middle of it?
I love the idea. Actually, I took a couple pictures this weekend of some roundabouts that had some pretty neat gateway art in the middle of them. So, getting folks to slow down, appreciate the environment, also welcome people into, you know.
We're going to put one on Army Post Road and show everybody how it works, right?
All right, public art, Army Post Road, got it.
No, roundabout on Army Post, I don't know about the public art, because we don't have a city like this.
That's all right. Well, a roundabout can work. Like I said, a lot, there are some folks who aren't certain about them, but they certainly do work. The major thing about them is that if there are intersection impacts or accidents or crashes, I apologize, they tend to be less severe, have less property damage impacts and personal injuries and fatalities. So, that would be the biggest outcome of making a change for that intersection. Happy to talk further about any, any particular intersection or segment that we studied, but I'll continue on with the sake of time. Sure. Yeah, as far as our study is concerned, you know, we, we know that it's a primary bike route identified in the plan, and so, we are supportive of that. Our study was, would you want it on the north or the south side? Because obviously, we're making connections into it, and so, some of that design decision related to what are you trying to connect to it and how best do you get them through? The north side felt more logical because you have more of the density of the residential type on the, on Highway 28 and Park side, as well as recreational fields on the north side. So, keeping that pedestrian bike traffic on the north side felt more logical. And so, again, that's why that underpass for Park Avenue kind of came to fruition.
Are you talking about like a multi-use trail from Highway 28 to the Great Western Trail?
I think the expectation would be it'd be a side path type, your eight-foot side path that would provide safe access.
Like a multi-use.
Yep. Yep. You know, multi-use trail, to me, I sometimes think about it more like a 10-foot, you know, a little bit more robust type of design for some of the maintenance equipment that might be using it. So, I don't know that any of it would be that, but, yeah. All right. Thomas Beck? As I said, we've added the South of Grayslake master plan to this study largely because of, you know, the opportunity that the city and others see down the road for this, this segment. It's a fantastic roadway, a lot of history for the city. Obviously, it's closed today. Do a little slide on McCray Park, so. But we know that there's additional capacity challenges that'll be presented on this segment. I think the counts were 16,000 to 17,000 vehicles a day expected along this corridor, which today is a two-lane, which does often act as a speeding throughway. So, we heard that from residents and business owners alike to make improvements to support development, but calm the traffic, support existing and future redevelopment. We know that it's a transit corridor, and the need to support that mode is quite important as well. The Grayslake Park master plan identified parking lot, a large parking lot off of Thomas Beck Road. Through the stakeholder involvement, we've gone through that. Our intent was not to make any changes to the Grayslake master plan, but we have had the suggestion not to include additional parking off of Thomas Beck Parking Lot into the, into the park. So, that was something that came out of that. As far as the alignment concern, we've kind of broke it into two, two pictures here you can see on the screen, thinking about the traffic, the volumes, and also the potential, what might be there in the future. There's some pieces that are going to come together here as Confluence, our teaming partner, brings together their recommendations for development plan, or land use plan for the development area. But largely, we're looking at two lanes from Flure to a revised intersection at, so what's today the Bell Avenue Business Park. This acts as a very long corridor with very little interruptions, and so, we're basically recommending to add an intersection or create an intersection. This is in support of that land use plan with creative gateway into the redeveloped area, as well as slow traffic and calm it, encourage access into that area. Also dividing two different cross-sections, so you've got two lanes retaining the Pomerance Family Trail, allowing those trees that are there today to mature and develop, sort of keep that nice home environment along that corridor. And then, a two-lane with a center turn lane to the east of that roundabout intersection, all the way to Bancroft Avenue, is what would be recommended. We anticipate additional traffic signals, a traffic signal at one of the intersections, whether it's Cassidy Drive or Colony Court, or a realignment of some sort, and a consolidation of accesses. In the future, if this area does redevelop, existing access management may need to be consolidated to be supportive of the master plan. So, all in all, a really good opportunity to enhance this corridor and allow for the redevelopment that's expected and support the multimodal connections. Coming kind of to the end of the infrastructure study, just real briefly, Indianola Hills neighborhood area had great representation at our open house, which was awesome to interact with them. They had a lot of good ideas. Our infrastructure study, the traffic analysis, roadway capacity, really looks at that throughput along Thomas Beck and Southwest 9th, I'm sorry, Indianola Road. But we do look at the capacity and sort of the operation at the intersection with Southwest 9th and, and Thomas Beck basically at that point. So, we've identified some improvements there. We don't look any further south on Southwest 9th, but certainly, future traffic studies can, can identify improvements as well beyond this infrastructure study. We do know there's constraints. We heard that there was constraints along the south side of the alignment, and there is neighborhood disconnection from access to trails, parks, and downtown without a car. So, addressing some of those as we make recommendations for the infrastructure study was important. We do identify there's a mix of lane widths and maybe some opportunities to improve through traffic. Traffic speeds along Southwest 9th is an ongoing concern, as we've heard multiple times. And so, we're looking to be supportive of future development, but also support the existing residential community there as well. So, a handful of recommendations that are all kind of throughout the corridor road diet along Indianola Road and Thomas Beck, trying to get some more multimodal pedestrian-activated traffic across Thomas Beck at improved cross, or pedestrian crossings on Southwest 9th and Southwest 7th, as well as side paths on the north side of Indianola Road to connect over to Martin Luther King Trail. So, a lot of opportunities in that neighborhood to make some incremental improvements over time. I think, as was mentioned already, these are maybe not timed or prioritized, but things to keep in mind as ways to improve multimodal connections.
Can you go back there?
Certainly can.
With number seven?
Yes.
What is that slip lane? Is that the, is that the access point from Thomas Beck to Southwest 9th? You would remove that?
Yeah. When you, well, when you come up, when you come up Bancroft off of Thomas Beck, you kind of have a free right lane that just kind of is called, I call it a slip lane.
Oh, okay. It sort of merges in rather than stops right there.
It's free flow right. So, we would remove that, but you'd retain the, the intersection, right and left turn movements.
Just be a stop sign there.
So, so through that Southwest 9th study, as you go further to the south there, and I know this is, this is your award, Josh, as you drive up there with that four lanes, that, that could be one of the most dangerous areas in our, in our city. Have, have we looked at, I guess I should look at Steve or, or somebody, have we looked and seen what can be done at least through that area as, especially as you're coming, well, either way, but as you're coming south up 9th by McCray Park, and it has that slight turn, it's almost like the other cars are heading right at your lane there, as they're coming northbound at you. That, to me, that, that probably needs to be addressed immediately. I know we've had multiple accidents there for years, but we haven't really did much about it.
I mean, I agree with that. Earlier this summer, and Steve, maybe you can address it, because I know we talked about sort of a plan that went a little farther north, but built off of what we were anticipating were these recommendations with the enhanced pedestrian crossing.
Yep. Honorable Mayor, Member of City Council, Steve Nipper, City Engineer. Yeah, we've had multiple requests, including our discussion earlier this year, Councilman Manabom and Councilman Gata. We've had multiple requests to, to look at and study the corridor to the south. We have not, we have not done a study or developed that. We've been, the latest thing that's been working with our Parks Department, how do we improve pedestrian and pedestrian access and improve sidewalks along the corridor, but we have not looked at at all overall.
Right. And I know we've, we've had for years, at least four to five years since the angry goldfish has been there, he's asked for a stoplight there. I, I don't believe that's the fix. I mean, the lanes are very thin through there, and I don't know if we just, we take it down to, you know, two lanes with a turning lane. I don't know how that's, I know when we talked about that, right when we started doing the Southwest 9th revitalization, we had a lot of pushback to do that, but something has to be done right there, or, you know. I mean, that, that's a very dangerous quarter mile right through there. People are going very, very fast, both, both north and south. So, that needs to probably be looked at sooner than later.
Right. A solution to slow things down.
Either slow things down, or, I mean, like I said, we, we tried to, we tried, and Christine and I was on that committee along with others. There was probably 100 different people, and when we brought up that two lanes with one turning lane and, and access for multimodal on each side, that they immediately pushed back. I mean, so, I mean, that, that will be a challenge to do something like that.
With the business now, they might be more willing.
Yeah, I don't think so. They want to use that as a, as a thoroughfare to get to and from downtown as a main corridor through, through there. You know, I, I think they're going to push more for wider lanes to, to make that turn instead of less lanes. You know what I mean? They're, they're, that's, that was the push that we heard for years.
That won't slow the speed.
No, it will not. I, I, I'm not agreeing with them. I'm just telling you that's, that, those are the challenges we're going to face when you put that steering committee back together.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's great. Any other questions on this corridor? Another small part of the infrastructure study was to look at recommendations out of the Grayslake master plan for the abandoned rail yard, utilizing that to expand the park facilities, specifically, a, the concept of a interactive wetland that would be south of the lake, receives stormwater runoff from the south. And so, our, our water resource engineers were able to look at that and try and figure out the best way to support that concept to see if it would work in order to develop an opinion of probable cost for construction. So, I'm going to go through real briefly, and I can unpack any level of detail that would be helpful for the council, mayor. The area has specific excavation limits for soils. It is cleared for various uses that are identified in, in that purchase agreement, but about four parcels, partial, part of four parcels are under what's called covenant restrictions that would limit their ability to be developed beyond just parking lots, the existing maintenance building, other types of. building, other types of development type situations, and certainly not additional excavation without expensive testing. So the soils have been remediated and improved for their use as is today, basically to the east of the Palmerance Family Trail connection. But we did have to truncate some of the overall recommendations for wetlands to stay on the west side of that Palmerance Family Trail to avoid those restricted covenant parcels. There were also challenges with excavation depth and storage for this location to be handled and used as a wetland. It needs to have a suitable volume, as also as well as the depth. Sort of the challenges with this is it's the bottom of a very large watershed, about 260 acres of watershed draining to this location, and it's very long and narrow. So you have very little distance in order to treat that stormwater coming in as well as the depth. And so it's already below ground. A lot of wetlands, you want it to come in at a higher level, kind of filter down in. We already have to excavate down fairly deep just to get to any type of a permanent pool or opportunity for treatment pool to occur. So another kind of challenge that we had to wrestle with, with our design and a grading plan. The drainage pathway, as I said, it's very long and narrow, and so we have three points of entry. We had to create a circumnavigating opportunity for that stormwater flow to filter out and go into microtreatment locations and provide that water quality ponding. We also met on site with the Parks staff, the Grayslake Park staff that were there, as well as headquarters staff to understand opportunities for staffing and resourcing the establishment and ongoing operation and maintenance of the wetland. There's currently not a facility like this anywhere in the Parks Department of the City of Des Moines. Certainly there are within the region, but it's not a particular toolset that the Des Moines Parks Department has today to make sure that that operates and functions as intended. There's expectation that there would be walking trails and trail connectivity throughout the wetland design, though pedestrian bridges and interaction between the stormwater and those pedestrian bridges and trails was a challenge as well. And connection to the redevelopment to the south also led to some of the concept of how the grading plan looked. So the next slide shows kind of how that layout would go, again, the constriction to the parcels that aren't under covenant restriction. We've identified the low-flow path and a handful of locations, I think 12 micro pools where stormwater would be treated before discharge in the Grayslake. There are three significant sediment basins. The main concern there is, one, that they're designed well enough, but two, that they can be accessed for maintenance, long-term maintenance is going to be critical for this to operate effectively. And so probably maintaining access for maintenance from the south would kind of challenge some of the development to make sure that that access was provided for equipment that we need to get in there to the sediment basin. Have a nice flow-through model. I can send you the link that you can watch it kind of fill up and fall out, but its design, really, its potential is for a two-year design storm. It really can't serve anything more than that. And so about every other year, you would, you know, on a relative basis, you would expect this thing would fill up to the brim and overflow into Grayslake Park. So lots of potential for it to fill up and drain out, but some of those larger storm events are going to not be able to be treated with this particular location and size and layout, just because of, like I said, the amount of excavation that we need to be happening to provide that pool. But it would be an amazing amenity. It certainly would provide some of the water quality, and we've definitely thought through how to navigate people through, they're not shown on this illustration, but you can see about four locations where we have pedestrian bridges. And in our cost estimate, we've basically put in a basic cost of, again, a multi-use trail, concrete, sort of as a mid, middle-of-the-ground type of cost estimate. I think you could go more expensive with sort of a boardwalk type of a concept, which would flood quite often and have a lot more maintenance. To the other extreme, where you could just leave it as a sort of a native grass walking trail with a couple of locations where you provided some entries with pavement into the wetland structure. I think a lot of that concept would be vetted out over time, but all those assumptions need to come forward so we can kind of get an opinion of probable cost for construction. Again, this is just for construction and design. There's also staffing and establishment maintenance costs that would go on top of this, but estimating kind of a cost bracket gives you a level of understanding of what might go into backing this out. There's a lot of excavation that would be needed, a lot of excavation would be needed, 151,000 cubic yards. So depending on the bid, aggressiveness of the bid of that excavation and where to put the soil, can have a high influence on the overall cost. But it would be a great amenity and certainly would provide additional water quality and connectivity to the existing development. I think it would be a neat asset if it could be built. As you can see, we went through a lot of the infrastructure study today, but not all of it. Unfortunately, can't go into that much detail. The next steps for us is to assign some of the traffic controls related to the South of Grayslake master plan as it's coming through after the public input meeting, they're refining their recommendations, and so we'll balance our traffic counts based on what's coming out of that recommendation. We'll refine our preferred concept for George Flag Parkway. We did look at two alternatives for George Flag. This was the one we talked about today that we're advancing, makes the most sense, and so we'll start developing our cost estimates and bring those forward to, as was discussed earlier today, sort of which projects and what's the timing of them, and what would be the triggers for those projects to go forward. That should be to a draft point by early September. I think the next opportunity would be September 13th to hear that South of Grayslake master plan had a workshop very similar to this, and so more opportunity to unpack some of the impacts along Thomas Beck Road might be presented as well. Hopefully that wasn't too much or too little. I tried to find the fine line between where your presentation today, but if there's any other questions that caught your eye, or you could answer.
So you have an alternative two here? Is that, is that more, or is that why you're not looking at this one?
Alternative two for George Flag?
Yeah.
We pulled that one out after discussion last week. The alternative, the concept was very similar to alternative one. The difference is we tried to minimize the amount of fill that would be needed. In order to do that, we flipped the Great Western Trail alignment and the George Flag alignment. And coming through all of our criteria, it really was a lose-lose-lose situation. It had more impact on adjacent properties. It had more challenges geometrically with access to Bell Avenue, and it really didn't save us that much in terms of fill at the end of the day. So we didn't present it today.
Anybody have anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott, we ready to move on to the next item? It should be fire operations.
We'll pull up that presentation and have our chief come on.
All right. Just going to find the mouse.
You can use the mouse or you can use the keypad.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council, John T. Kip, chief of the fire department. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today and talk about fire department operations. I also have with me Assistant Chief Todd Francisco, who's in charge, his duties also include being in charge of our training, and Assistant Chief Percy Coleman, whose duties include the operations. He's the one who the daily shift commanders work with and make our operations go. I have just a few slides that I'd like to walk through to kind of illustrate where we're at and what we're thinking about the present and the near future. And I know that you'll all have questions, and I'm hoping that the information on these four slides can, it might help you develop some additional questions, or they may provide some illustrations as we walk through the answers to the questions that you have. But basically, we're going to talk about the service level expectations, a solution to a current gap in timing, kind of how we got here, 2015 to 2021, and what our service level looks like with Station 11 when it gets completed, and the math on that. So the basic questions are, in addition to things like citizen survey, the outcomes that the manager's providing, all of you, and the KPIs, and response time, the service level expectation is about how much can we produce with the number of people and the apparatus we have? And so what we've used for a number of years is simultaneously having two structure fires and three EMS calls at the same time. Obviously, the pressure that comes on that is over time, all volumes go up, that stretches the resources. How many people does it take?
I have a question on this. So where does that expectation come from? How does that interfere with, for example, accreditation standards? I mean, where does response?
Do you want us, we can dig there now, or we can kind of walk through, because the 2015 to 2021 is kind of how we got here. That's why I said that the how many, how many calls can we go on, and how many people does it take, is not an NFPA 1710 standard about response time. And it's not out of the accreditation book where we are currently working on the risk assessment, assessing all of our buildings, assessing all of our risks and processes that happen in the city, as well as what's called a task analysis, which breaks down, how many people does it take to do each job, and how many of those jobs together do a function like a fire, an EMS call, things like that? Those are used to put together what's called the standard of cover. This is how many people it takes to do these functions, and that's a community and a council conversation about what do you want the new service level expectation to be? And that's a process where I think we literally are out in the public with the neighborhoods, doing an education piece on, this is what all these things mean. It's really, it's taking the citizen survey to an educational component, so the citizens themselves can say, yes, these are the, these are the parts we want because we understand it.
Are you doing a standard of coverage, or are we hiring a study group to do that? Or is your administration going to do that?
My administration is going to do that.
Yeah, no, that's, I think we would need a third party to do that. Absolutely. With, obviously, your assistance, but no, we would need a third party to do that for, I think for all of us to feel comfortable. I'll let you, I'll let you go ahead and finish.
And just, I'd be, I'd be great with that, because that would save us a lot of capacity. The concern I will be that you can get a, you can get third parties to do this. The feedback I get from other chiefs is it's a much more, it's a deeper dive when you do it internally, but I'm totally open to having a third party do that standard of cover, absolutely. Kind of back on the, on the how many people does it take to provide the service level protection? We have 23 frontline apparatus. We have nine fire engines, five ladder trucks, and nine medics or ambulances. And so to provide those structure fires and EMS calls, it takes 20 of those 23 pieces. That's the minimum, and that takes 53 people to provide that. Are we meeting that today? Yeah, we are. And how are we doing that? We're doing it with use of overtime on just over a third of our calls the last couple of months. The better question is, how many people does it take to have everything in service? All 23 at each station, or even more than that when Station 11 opens? What's the magic number to have everything in service? That number is 64. Currently, we're running a high daily vacancy rate, and so we need a solution that gets us over a delay in hiring, so we're at the 64, because I think that's what everybody wants. They want Station 11 to open up with everything in it and everything to be in service. So the way we get there is we continue the hiring process that we're in right now. People are doing their CPAT practices, they've already been through the Civil Service Commission, so they're getting ready to do the physical test and then the interviews, so they can start their training in January. It really takes that 20 to 25 in that class within the solution, because we bring in a lot of, this last time, I think we, a third of the class, which is the city of Des Moines, they don't have a background in fire and EMS. So we put them through the EMT, we teach them fire suppression and rescue, and then we put them through the paramedic, and that takes about a year. You could go to DMAC and get it done in two, we do it in one. But if you front-load that class, you don't get the benefit until December. So in this solution, you take the 20 to 25 based on vacancies in that first class, you immediately turn around and you hire a certified class, a class of people who already hold firefighter one, firefighter two, and the paramedic certification. That helps our numbers and shortens our recruitment and training and getting to the station time by about nine months. They would come in in June, they'd hit the station in August, because we wouldn't be teaching them how to do the work. We'd be verifying their skills and showing them the Des Moines operational guidelines and how we do business. There are some costs to that, and perhaps there's some long-term gains. When you hire a certified list, you have to be able to recognize other people's certifications through the state of Iowa. It'll be a challenge on our, on diversity. It'll be a challenge finding women. You're essentially grabbing people from other departments already working full-time, and you're enticing them to come to the city of Des Moines, which they should already want to do, and we do get applicants in every process for people particularly from Florida, Colorado, California, and the Minneapolis area of Minnesota. They do tend to look to come here, but we don't want to, we don't want to greatly disadvantage on a long-term basis diversity. We don't want to hold out access to being on the Des Moines Fire Department to residents of the city of Des Moines, because there's not a lot of firefighter paramedics who live in the city. And so that's a concern I have, but that's something that can, that can get us through this timing issue.
Would you, would you make the probation period less then for them?
I guess I could look at it. It doesn't change how quickly they get in the station or how quickly they're operating on an apparatus. We use the probationary period to, so that station officers versus being in the academy can assess the skills, and they have what's called a, they have a skills book that they walk through, so many IVs, fucking hydrants, things like that.
Didn't you recently make that a longer one, like over the last three years? A longer probational period?
Well, yeah.
It used to be, how long did it used to be?
Oh, it used to be very short. When we went to paramedic, and this is a number of years ago, it's 2004 or '05, the feedback we got from the officers was, by the time they get done with the training, we don't have any time to assess them. So they hit the station, and a month later, they're off probation, and the officers are like, we need the time. So a year from the, a year from the end of the academy or the two-year limit is what we use for the probationary period. So from higher...
There's evidence that you have to leave it that long, in your eyes, in your administration eyes?
Yes, and the reason I think it's really valuable is we have had, and this is a real credit to our company officers, we've had some people that were new to the fire service, and they kind of struggled. They were good people, working hard, their learning curve is a little longer, and they hit the station, and they needed a performance improvement plan, and they worked through it. And I think those successes are worth it, because you want to hire, you want to hire well, train well.
But my question was, for these accredited firefighters that you're going to hire, would you, would you, since they've already had a majority of the training, not the Des Moines firefighter training, but the majority of the training, would you make the probation period less?
I, I wouldn't look to do that, because they're coming in at a higher level anyway, so their probationary book ought to be a breeze, or we didn't do a very good job of hiring.
How many, how many people have you hired in the past that were certified already? Is that an ongoing practice or just something you're presenting here?
It's a, well, from the regular process, this last class, for example, we had three people who were already firefighter one and two and paramedic certified. So at the end of the, when they got to June of this year, they went and started operating the stations right away. So then on the, on the back end of this is reporting back the success of this, how it went, where the vacancies are at, and how we move forward. This process is the fastest way to put people in the fire station. So between the 17 and the academy now, we'll call it 25 on the next class, we'll call it 18. All but about 15 of those would be in the stations by August. The rest would be in December, that one year, that one-year period.
Chief, excuse me. So just a little bit of background, I don't quite understand... I don't quite understand. This new station has been in the work, or planning in the works for like a couple of years. So it's going to open in September now, or September or October? So like, why are we talking about this now when a year for, getting staffed a year from now, like, haven't we had two years to get ready?
I'm really glad you asked that question because it's the perfect transition to the slide that I have up that will walk us through why we were talking about it in 2015 and why we're still talking about it now.
Okay.
In 2013 to 15, we did a, we were taking a pretty hard look at ourselves because we actually had less than 280 employees on the fire department. We had up to eight rigs out of 23 that are out of service at a time. We were a mess. And so, riding through some tough budget years, we applied for a SAFER grant in 2015 and we didn't get it. It was a smaller one, it was looking for three. But we applied for another one in 2016 and that allowed us to hire a number of firefighters to get our apparatus back in service. You, as a council, authorized retaining those positions, paying for them after the SAFER grant. That was how we were starting to get things back in service. We already had in works, in the works, building Station 11. And we knew that that would add an apparatus to our fleet. And so over the last two fiscal cycles, you've added seven people to our authorized strength to keep the ambulance in service. And you've added three to keep the engine in service. Because the engine isn't new, it's simply moving from one station to another, but it needs that additional person to stay in service. That was all designed to get to that number of 64. Along the way, we also knew that we needed a bridge operationally in the northeast. And so formally in 2018, but we really started doing this in 2016, started working with the Altoona Fire Department. So we're both responding into each other's northeast and west. And so that's been good for all of us. We needed a way to pay for all those additional positions. That's where the local option sales tax really helped buoy us. We needed to build the new fire station, which we're doing now. It's, we're what, one or two days into them being laid again. I don't know that the cabinets are in, that kind of thing. But we can't, we can't build it any faster than they're building it. And then along the way, we needed to monitor the trends for not just planned, but unplanned retirements and changes in our daily vacancies. And that's the point on the next slide that's really about today's math. And like I said on the first slide, our calls continue to go up. There's not going to be relief where we're going to knock off 10% or 20% of our calls. Our firefighters are responding to a lot of calls and we'll set another record again this year. Had COVID not delayed our hiring, today, our operational strength, the 274, the whole department's 306, 274 is what is assigned to operations. If you took off the 15 vacancies, which we planned for and we have today, that leaves enough people to spread between three divisions. That number 64 is how many are gone on each day. Historically, that number's 22. And that can be people on vacation, heli days, sick leave, military, emergency, COVID, injury on the job, injury off the job, a different kind of injury on the job. There's a number of those that we track every day. Historically and consistently, we've been at 22. We have more injuries right now than we have had historically. As of yesterday morning, we have 23 injuries, 17 of which have an injury date in 2021. And that's everything from a swollen nose to a replaced hip. But that daily vacancy rate is what pushes us below the number.
Why do you think that is?
A third of them are off-duty injuries. And on those, I'd have no idea. But we literally are a hearing, a cut finger, a shoulder, a knee. They're not.
35% overtime has anything to do with it? Or you don't think that has anything to do with any type of on-the-job injuries or even off-the-job injuries?
No, because, well, what I know about the injuries, for a lot of them are, yeah, they're a second, they're a second event. Where 10 years ago, there was a knee and then there was a step. And I don't have an answer for what they all are.
Did you say that body types are different, the injury?
Yeah, we're kind of a, if you put them all together, you'd have a human being, I think, at this point. There's a, there's a lot of difference out there. We have a couple of backs, but that's our most common and that's consistent. The above and the below on that, it's pretty busy. There's a lot of math there. Obviously, the above is what was planned. And at the historical daily vacancy rate of 22, everything's in service with Station 11, that's 64 people. That's not to say that the minimum on every rig is the optimum, but that's the answer to the question about things being in service with Station 11. What is below shows that both, we have the 15 vacancies we planned, we have 17 in the academy that should have graduated over a month ago, and we have that higher-than-normal daily vacancy rate all at the same time. That's why our, the daily availability is about 55. And of course, that fluctuates. If you have, say, more sick leaves or vacations or militaries, those things go up and down. So that's why on a third of the days, we're paying overtime to keep those 53 people and those 20 apparatus in.
I just have a couple of questions and maybe I should wait till the end. But I remember sitting in the audience in 2015 when the study was presented. And it was very eye-opening. I thought it was a study that really opened up my eyes as to what was happening. But at that time, we said we needed more firefighters. We needed to increase our fire. Now, fast forward, I know that we worked really hard to get Station 11. Every statement that I have ever made has been, we need a fully-staffed Station 11. And I never wavered from that. And then I know you and I had a conversation, you called me and said, well, you know, we're not, we're not going to be able to get it fully-staffed, but we should have it fully-staffed by, and then I think you gave me a date, I don't know, January, you know, when this next class. But you also said, we're going to have two classes going at the same time. At least that's what I understood you to say. I find it concerning, I find it concerning when we say, well, due to COVID, because I think every person in this room has continued to work throughout COVID. So I'm not sure why we couldn't have gotten another class going. But I find it concerning when we have a class that will now graduate in January and it's taking so long for this next group of recruits to get ready that they're not even going to start until January. So does it mean that we're not capable of running two classes at the same time? Or why are we, why is the recruitment so long? And I think some of that, in what my understanding is anyway, is our Civil Service Commission. I just got a text from somebody who has a family member that has applied and he said, he must be watching, I don't know if we're on air or what, but he said, that he was, he was deducted some points. He would have made it. It says he scored like something and he lost five points through the Civil Service Commission because he wasn't a resident. Can't we make some changes to our Civil Service Commission requirements? I know they have to go through the Civil Service Commission, but it seems like we're losing good applicants, maybe because this point score and maybe I just don't understand it. But, you know, when I, when I know of people that have applied two or three times, didn't make it, but they ultimately did, wouldn't we have been better off just to hire them the first time? You know, two applications before? I guess that's where I'm hung up, is that we have good people that are applying. Why are we having such small classes when we know that there are good recruits out there that really want this profession? My nephew included. I mean, you know, full disclosure, I've got a nephew that's in the class right now. But it just, it just seems like we could make the hiring process a little easier and still get good quality people. I'm not asking you to, to take a less capable person, but are we really knocking people, giving them points off because they don't live here or, you know, for whatever reason?
Right. Can I kind of walk through, not in the order that you asked them, can I walk through those before you ask your question?
That's fine, you can wait.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment.
Okay. So in a different order, the, where the changes for civil service would occur would be with the civil service. I know that they have specifically and deliberately assigned the residency point. That was very, that was strong there. And all of the things before them obviously can be a conversation. They have helped us in, in starting last year with the COVID because we could only put so many people in a room. And we knew that if we hired a class of 25, we couldn't have them all in the same room. We'd have to do some pretty interesting things. But generally, on our process, and I credit Chief Francisco with this, it literally used to take a year, just the application. When I applied, it was greater than a year. And he got that part down to about seven months. Some of that is tied to the licensing of the CPAT testing that we do, which is about the only test out there that's made it through the Department of Justice and does not disadvantage people without prior fire service or women in particular. And so we have some good pieces. Can it be shorter? With the certified list, it can be. We'll want to make sure we don't disadvantage anybody long-term in using that process. That could be a way to go. So there's military points people get, that's a part of the process. They can get either five points or 10 points out of 100. There are five points that people can get for being a resident of Des Moines, as evidenced by their, I believe their voter registration. But all that falls under the jurisdiction of the Civil Service Commission. So any of the ideas that are possible there, we'd have to present with them and work on that. And I think they're all in on hiring good people to become part of the city organization. Not worried about that. There's probably some things that we can, we can come up with that might help them. But they interviewed over 200 people in this current process for us. And one of the benefits of COVID is by changing their order and changing their process, they shorten the window for people to go through the CPAT and the interview. So that has helped us. If you just had the pieces of the hiring and you didn't have different calendars for the council and the commission and everything else, you could scrunch it into 12 weeks. That's never worked out in the calendar. The shortest we've gotten it is right at seven months. Could we get it down to four potentially? But the CPAT would be the, would be the struggle there. I agree that we have a lot of good people that apply. And it is, it is painful to go through those last 40 to 50 people, especially if you're only hiring 18 to 25. And you don't get to that point without being quality. But there's nothing magic about, you know, I was, I applied three times, know people that have applied 11.
How many were in your class, John?
Oh, well, that's part of the reason we're here. My class was 33 people.
How many was in Joe Van Hollen's class?
Not FBS.
How many? How many was in Percy's class?
33.
He's the same as me.
How many was in your class, Francisco? How many?
22.
22.
We had feast and famine through the late 80s and early 90s. And so we had wide fluctuations and no hiring, and then we would hire 33. And now, our department is an average age of just over 46 years old. So five years from now, we are going to see a lot of turnover. And I would rather see us get to a point where we are regularly having an academy of a predictable number of people so that our retirements are predictable and we don't see the fluctuations.
Tony. After hearing all this, I just would like to recommend that we do go out for a study to determine, because I think your calls are way up. So how many firefighters who really do need an EM, you know, the paramedics because of the volume of calls? So what is the right number? Is it 300 or is it 350? I don't know. Is it, whatever the right number is, let's determine that. The other thing is on civil service. I think you get who they send to you. I think we need to reverse the order. I think staff needs to interview everyone and then you determine the ones you would like to go to civil service. I don't know how we change that. You know, the questions to ask. And then how do we get larger classes? If we need to catch up right now, how do we get the larger classes to get caught up? And how do we speed up the hiring process? If some of the solution was the hiring process. I think there's a lot of areas that we can refine and improve. But I think first of all, let's find out what the number is. Let's find out how we can go through the process faster and get people in. Just would like to understand how we could do that and a better way to support the work that everyone's doing in the fire department.
And I think that to Connie's point, we need to look at our budget. We need to make sure that we've got money in the budget and that might be that something else gets taken out. But I don't think there's anything that's more important to our residents in the city than our first responders.
We have budget, we just need more people.
We need to.
We don't even have the budget. We don't even meet the expectations for our budget.
We just need to make sure.
So those are just a couple of things that I would think that, I don't know what would help speed it up, but I think the civil service thing where you get to select from the list where it should be the opposite. You should be asking the questions to determine who you feel are the best fit and maybe be able to get more people.
Chief?
Yes.
On the callbacks, how many officers are, or staff people are called back each day?
How many people are called back?
Yeah. Like in a week or a month or something, you know? Give us an idea of how many people are, do you call it pulling two shifts or?
I can provide some greater detail. What I looked at to prepare for this was specifically May 1st through July 28th, 89 days. On 31 days, we called people back. On 22 of those days, we called three people or fewer back to hit the 53. On some of the other days, now, I included any kind of callback, even non-operations. We did have some larger callback days when we did high-rise suppression training with multiple companies. We called people back for a couple of specific training academy functions. But about two-thirds of the time, one-third of the time, it's three people, it's two to four people. And what Chief Coleman tracks every day is not only every type of leave, but how many rigs were out of service and specifically, how many firefighter, fire medic, senior medic, whatever was called back so that that's known each day specifically to the person what that level is. Does that answer your question?
Well, so like, what would be a high number of people that are on a callback?
I think for our high-rise training, I think we called 11 people back, but they weren't going to the station. That was everybody that got called in for any purpose that day and some of them were scheduled.
But so on any given day, there are, are there two or three pieces of equipment that are out of service then?
Yep. It's not unusual. There's, at this point, these numbers, it's almost always going to be one. We've had some zeros, but very few. It's usually either two or three. And they use the callbacks to not exceed the three.
So I was so naive coming into this. I thought that if something was out of service, I thought it meant it was being repaired. I didn't realize that it was, you didn't have the staffing for it. So I think the general public might be taken back that, oh, so there are three pieces of equipment that are, we don't have the staff? Especially if it was like, well, my son lives near Station 5, I think it is. And it's like, so there are days that there are pieces of equipment there? I think a lot of people would be startled to learn that, so. I think a lot of people would be startled to, to learn that, so.
Sure.
I'm glad, you know, I'm glad to know that our pieces, our pieces of equipment are being well-maintained, but...
Well, we do, we do take them out of service for that as well.
Well, sure, but, but like, if they're out of service because we don't have the staffing, that's, to me, that's kind of scary.
Right.
It comes down, we need to get it staffed, and we need to, we need to work very quickly to get, make sure that we have additional staff.
I agree.
But, but to ask people to, to regularly pull two shifts, I think that's draining on...
I think it is.
Sure.
Draining on individuals and on families, so.
Yeah.
That's scary to me also.
Yeah, the piece I want to explore a little bit more that we haven't really talked about, I think we started going there, was retirements. And we're talking about solving this for the short term, and I think we still have a lot of questions about that. But we've got a lot of folks coming up for retirement in the next 10 years. And so the question is, what, how many, how many are coming up for retirement? How many are retirement eligible? How many are in our drop program? And then what is the plan?
So that we don't have to have this conversation, you know, repeatedly, like what, what is the plan to make sure that we are having a consistent number of classes so that we are prepared and we don't get behind when we're facing all these retirements?
Yeah, and we, and we can provide, I wouldn't do it by name, but I can do it by number. About the next 60 planned or unplanned vacancies. Because as we, as we discussed in our, you know, we've discussed at Labor Management, we've discussed at our officers' meetings in May, we minimally are going to have to do a class of 20 to 25 every year for the foreseeable future. The, kind of to Connie's point about the, are there things that we can do that, that kind of shore, shore up the mechanics of that? But what three years ago was looking like 20 to 22 every year are 25 or so. The, the good thing about the drop retirement plan is you can, you can predict when people are leaving. That's a date certain. But what, what can also happen is people can leave before that date. There's a penalty, but that doesn't seem to be much of a deterrent. And so it's the unplanned and unexpected retirements. We've seen a couple of those, but the numbers today are really about the injuries. The long-term solution is about the, what the, what the overall number is and the speed of the hiring process. I'm, I'm totally with everybody on that.
Mayor, if I could add, just, I mean, there are several answers to that question that I see. The, the size of the academy will be looked at and increased beyond the, the 20 that has been historical. The opportunity to put in and insert the pre-certified classes going after existing firefighters because that expedites the process. But those are, like you said, more immediate. And the real question is, is 64 the right target on a daily basis? And so that's where we'll go back and we'll look at what...
Right.
What opportunity do we have to hire a consulting crew to come in and help the council and the general public understand this balance of you have both an immediate potential need, that's the two structure fires and three ambulance calls. That's just one service level aspect. But then you have the number of calls that are going on and increasing. You have the geographics of the locations. It's incredibly important, right, for response times. So all of that could be put together in a community conversation that will lead us to a number that's likely to be different than 64. We don't, we need to go through that.
Sure.
But the best number we have right now is to target the 64 and to get there...
And to be there.
With the hiring, with, with maybe some tweaking in civil service. I don't have a lot of faith that that state process can be changed easily. But whatever we can do with the hiring, the addition of the cert, the one above 20, I think those are all...
But it's, it's not just getting there because, I mean, I think some of the staffing conversations, we've gotten there, but then we don't stay there. And it seems like we're always playing catch-up as a consequence. And it'd be nice to not be playing catch-up.
Good, good point. And so the last part of this is getting to 64 implies an expectation of how many vacancies at any time. And we're, we have been utilizing that 22 as the expectation. I would tell you with what I've seen on the data that's been provided, we, we do need to plan for more vacancies occurring mid-cycles. That becomes a, that does become a budget issue. Because at that point, you're saying, if you're going to expect 25 vacancies more typically, then we are going to need to add as, as high as nine officers over time.
But, but we haven't been at authorized strength, but we budgeted for authorized strength for years. So where does that money go?
We were...
If we don't?
Where, where does the money go?
If we don't spend the full personnel, the general fund balance benefits.
Okay. So it's used in other departments?
In future years.
Future years.
So, so let me just ask this question. Since 2018, has our response times gotten better? Because where, where I sit, and, and I know probably the mayor would feel the same way, we went out and we lobbied for the local option sales tax. And part of that was the service level that we were going to provide and the staffing level that we were going to provide, along with the new fire station, was going to give our citizens a better service level. And we went out and we pushed for it, and it passed overwhelmingly. Is, what's the response times now compared to 2018?
They're roughly the same, but specifically on the, on the lost conversation, it was, it was to keep things in service and to cut the response time in the northeast portion of the city by half, by placing a station halfway through them. That, that is very specifically with...
We built a brand-new station, and we're, you're going to put, you're adding two more people. That is not what we signed up to do.
We're gonna put, well, we...
I'm sorry.
An engine and an ambulance was what will be there.
When? The day it opens?
The day the academy gets out.
Okay. And so does that mean that Josh's ward and Engine 8 on McKinley basically is out of service most of the days like it is now?
3, 8, and 9 are the three that, that come out.
Okay. And 9 historically over the last 10 years is basically the first one to get pulled like that, correct? And Bill Gray's ward?
Up until, up until about two years ago, that was the case, yeah.
And then Engine 3, I mean, it's really a net zero. So Engine 3, you're gonna, you're gonna pull out of there. That's the one on the east side. But then we're going to put it at Engine 11. So really, what, we went out and sold east side and the rest of the city is a net gain of zero. And that is not something that I can hang my hat on, and I'm not proud of that. And I'm not, that is not what we signed up to do. And, and you've known that? Your administration has known that? I've sat in a meeting with those two gentlemen when they were not in those white shirts, telling me the exact same thing that I'm telling you. So I'm not sure where the disconnect is, but I'm going to ask the mayor that I would like to form a small committee, myself, the mayor, and, and council member Voss, okay? We would like to look at your unit hourly utilization for the last five years. I want to know when, when things are pulled out of service. We're going to look at that. We're going to sit down with your administration, somebody from the city manager's office, and we're going to figure out how to fix this thing. And someone from Local 4, the boots on the ground, and we're going to figure out how to fix this thing. Because when I get a text message on July 19th sitting in this chair, it's a Monday at 9:45 in the morning, Engine 2, 3, 8, and 9, all out of service. Medic 6 and 10, which are both in my ward on the south side, out of service. Truck 6, out of service. Now, that's not just staffing, that's your training, which I understand, you need to do training. But when you pull two ambulances out of my area at the same time, you don't think the citizens need to know that? That's not, that, that is not what we signed up for. That is not what we went and lobbied for, for an extra penny. Part of that money, that lost revenue, is for firefighters. We've said it, they voted for it, and we're going to give them that. And whether you want to be a part of that and your administration wants to be a part of it, but somebody's going to be accountable for it, and ultimately, that's going to be you. It's not a budget issue. This is not a budget issue. This is a, a leadership and a staffing issue that we've talked about since I've sat in this chair. And you know that as well as I do. I mean, Medic 6 and Medic 4 were out of service completely when I sat down in this chair. You were running 25 runs out of Medic 1. It, it's, this is beyond just keep talking about it, talking about it. Your response, your response times are not better. They're not. You can't sit here and tell us, and they should be. If you don't hire, you're going to lose, if we only hire 20 to 25, you're going to lose two to three every class. You know that, chief. It's not something new. You've all done it. They can both tell you the same thing. We need to catch up, but we also, like Josh said, we need to fix it. And so we don't have these conversations. So our residents know, you know what? When they call 911, they're going to be there in less than four minutes. And you know what? That happened to my mother in Medic 6, and it saved her life. Within 40 minutes, she was in a surgical unit fixing her heart. From the time I picked up the phone to the time she got to Methodist Hospital, and that's because Medic 6 was in service. Okay? So we've got to fix this. We can talk all, all we want about it, but we, we are going to sit down and all of us need to know what type of service level we're providing. And taking three engines out, I don't know, that's not my job, but I want a professional to tell me. And I understand your professionals, but I want somebody outside the box looking at it. I mean, I, we can continue to talk about it, talk about it, but I think a lot of our time's up. I would like to see that type of committee set up, Mayor. And, and I think that we can all sit down and have a, and have a discussion with your administration, with, with the guys on the ground, and then we can feed back the rest of the council. I'd like the whole council to be part of it, but then it'd be an open meeting.
I think, well, I think both on all of our public safety too, if we're understaffed or we can't get recruits or we can't get hired, there's a problem across the board that we need underneath, not just this, but to make sure we're up to full strength.
But we went out and sold the local option...
I understand, I understand.
With the fire department. And we're not living up to it, and we are not living up to that. And I cannot honestly look at my constituents and say, oh, we did what we told you we were going to do. I can't do that now. I just can't. And, and I hope you understand that. It's, it's nothing personal against it. I think you guys, but you're, you're not following through on what our policy and what we set our standards to be. You're not. So, I mean, we're, we're going to fix it one way or another. You can be a part of it, you can be a part of it, or one way or another, it's going to get fixed. So, I mean, we can keep talking about it all you want. You've given us the data, but I'm not sure where else we can go.
Does it, does it help to have the committee and the standards of cover? Or do you want those to be put together?
I want to look at how many, I, I truly want to know the data of you're pulling these units out. And, and I think that hourly unit will give us that. And that is something that is very, very important, that all of us need to have that data.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I get those, the data, the data on that, the, the daily vacancy data might be helpful, but also the standards of cover using an outside agency as a, as a vendor for that versus...
Well, we're all going to sit down and talk about who we think the best vendor. You can come with a recommendation. I'm sure Local 4 will come with a recommendation. We'll, the city manager can come with a recommendation, and then we'll decide who's, who it's going to be.
Right.
But no, I, I don't, we're not going to wait. This needs to be, we need to get this under control and figure out where we're going to go with the next class and where... This is something that we said we were going to do, and I'm sorry, I'm a man of my word, and I'm going to do it. And I said I would be the first one on the soapbox if we weren't spending the money the right way with local option sales tax, and we are not. Well, we are not.
We're spending the money the right way, we're not spending enough.
We're not getting the expectations covered.
We don't have...
Because the money's being spent on firefighters.
Well, no, the money's not. It's going back into the general fund, and you're using it for something else. So it's not.
No.
It's not.
And so when there's callbacks, those, those staff people are getting time and a half, right?
If they're on their first day off, they're getting time and a half, and if they're on their second day off, they're getting double time. And I guess the, the other, the other, Linda's list of questions was about when we, when we come to the hiring and we've had vacancies for a period of time, we do work with the manager's office and finance, and I think each of the last six classes, we've hired over the authorized strength to get up, up to four people additional in the academy. It's, it's the furthest the budget will let us go, but that's, that's how we've done that on the last six classes.
But you've only had 20. The last time Scott and I talked about it, which was a few years ago, he, he said, I gave the okay, we had local option sales tax to hire more, but you, you're stuck on the number of 20. You told me you didn't want to do a class more than 20 people when we toured station number of 11. That came right out of your mouth.
Well, what about for the next class? I mean, here it was 20 to 25. What about targeting 25 to 30?
The problem, the problem, and this is why I want to do that certified class. When you start getting up to the 25 to 30, not only does it take more staff out of operations to train them, you're not going to get most of them until December.
Then we better do that certified class first then, because we need to, we, we need to get some numbers up immediately.
So if trainers are an issue, are there possibly retired guys, just retired that can come back and take the role of trainers versus the current staff to, or to beef it up so you can get more people on it? Just curious if you could do that? Or people from other, you know, they have the same standards? I appreciate they're on the duty now, but if they have just retired, possibly come back to beef up training? I don't know what all is involved, but...
I'm not opposed to that, you know, as, as far as the, what their, what their experience was, are they a good trainer? That, that's always...
Well, that's true. I mean, I'm just saying, how, just looking at every possible, what is the stumbling block? What's the obstacle to get them hired, trained, and out the door and into stations? So whatever those stumbling blocks is, because we don't have enough trainers, so we got to figure that out. And if we don't have this, we got to figure that out. Because to Joe's, Joe's point and everybody's point, we just need to move on it. We need, we've got it in the budget, let's get the people hired, and let's get them out of the stations.
Linda? Linda?
I just have one clarification. We have a class that is in training now that will graduate in January.
In December.
In December. Are we not in the process of hiring another group right now? Will that continue or do we stop that and go? I just heard somebody say, let's make the next class the...
I certainly think that continues. We don't want to lose...
Yeah, we don't want to lose those. Can we get the, the experienced firefighters in another class?
Yeah, that's the, the, the third slide was to, the current process goes and you get a class started. They, they begin with EMT training while we're recruiting the second class. And they go and they do their fire operations at the time we're getting done with them, do the certified class. And so that, that's where it fits best for the facilities, the number of people. And I really believe that's, that's the fastest you can get them through unless you get rid of the current process, and you'll lose four to months.
Yeah, no, we don't, I don't think we want to do that. We've got good applicants...
Right.
There, and I just want to speed up getting them on board...
Yeah.
And then get the firefighters from other communities.
Is it legally possible? Yes. I would not recommend canceling the current recruitment process.
No, I, I just wanted to make that, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it.
Joe, you have something else?
No.
Keep, thanks for the update. We're going to put our heads together and work with you and everybody, and let's try to solve our issues. We need, we need more guys in the, in the stations and on the apparatus.
Guys as in guys and gals?
Guys and gals. People. People.
Bodies. Many bodies. Thank you.
All right, with that, I look forward to seeing you all this afternoon.[1777.16]
Is it 4:45?
4:45.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.